And as I had spoke, I just wanted to mention up at the Coconut Hyatt right now is the Save Our Water Summit. And I just, there's 600 people there, it's sold out. Governor DeSantis will be there at 10:30. So I know we've got a busy day. We're gonna, you know, I'm looking at it as we're all gonna be here together today for whatever we're accomplishing. Would anybody want to entertain the motion for Council to break at 10:30? To go up and see the governor briefly? Or would we just wanna plow through our business and, you know? And I said to Arlene, "I'll take the blame on this, I should've paid closer attention. We could've entertained having an evening meeting tonight and all been there." So I do apologize about that, but I just wanted to start there.
I'd second the motion.
Can we get in if we don't have a ticket?
Yes, we can, and it's just, and it's unfortunate. There's a lot of people there, and it's unfortunate for the Lee County Commissioners who also have a meeting today. So they were there but left as well. So I'm really sorry about the scheduling of this, but...
Mr. Mayor, I think I actually have something that can help with that as well. You have a second reading today on the gas can, or the gas skimmer ordinance. I've been in contact with the Sheriff's Department. They'd like to set up some follow-up meetings with me to address Councilman Gibson's questions. So I'm asking to continue that item to a date certain of September 16th at 9:00 a.m. So that's one item we can take off the agenda tonight. That makes it easier.
Why don't we keep going because this is not a light agenda?
Yeah, okay, so fair enough, the point has been made, let's move along. Public comment, please, members of the public that would like to speak on any item right now, or excuse me, agenda items, please come forward at this time. No? Oh, great, okay, we're moving right along here. Yes?
Do you want to withdraw your motion? We've got a motion made in seconds, so...
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion to break at 10:30 for now. Yeah, okay, wonderful, thank you. The consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Okay, motion to approve in a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba. Councilwoman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay. Counsel, any further comments on the consent agenda? Okay, we're gonna move on to proclamations and presentations. The stormwater improvement feasibility analysis for IBE Quinn Downs and Dean Street South. Green Sheet 1908-255. Matt Feeney, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Matt Feeney, Assistant City Manager. We have Nick Harrison, David Wilkerson, and Jared, I'm sorry, Jared Wilkerson and David Haas from American Structure Point. They have been working over the past year to analyze Hurricane Irma through the Dean, Quinn, Downs, Imperial Benita Estates neighborhood that City Council identified. They're here to present some flood reduction strategies and some cost feasibilities for some ideas for Counsel to consider to help alleviate flooding in the area. I do want to remind everyone, as Jim Beaver always has, that, you know, these solutions are really flood reduction. We can't permanently prevent flooding within the city, you know? That's just something that we have to understand as folks. So without further ado.
Thank you, Matt. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. American Structure Point would like to thank the Counsel for the opportunity, present our work on this stormwater feasibility analysis for the identified neighborhoods. My name is Nick Harrison, I'm the, I'm our contract manager for our miscellaneous service contract with the city. We've got a lot of information that we would like to share with you all today, and we're gonna do that as concisely as possible. But to be considerate of the Counsel's time, we respectfully request that we hold questions until the end of the presentation, at which point we'd be happy to take on any questions and go back to areas of interest within the...
Sure, okay, no interruptions.
So with that, I'm gonna turn it over.
Please.
So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our engineers that were directly responsible for this study. We have David Haas, who is our project task manager, and Jared Wilkerson, who was our lead project engineer.
Right.
With that, David?
So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity here. Again, I'm Dave Haas with American Structure Point. We're gonna be covering the Hurricane Irma event. I'm gonna try to go through this as briefly as we can so we get you guys plenty of time to ask questions after this is over. I know that's probably what you guys are more interested in, asking us what the results are, the analysis. So with that, I'll jump right in. So again, I'm David Haas, I was the project task manager. Jared Wilkerson behind me was the lead project engineer. We've got 15, I've got 15 years of experience in hydraulics and hydrology, and Jared's got about 10. We've worked at American Structure Point. We primarily do work out of Indiana, but we've done work all over the United States, including Florida, Texas, Ohio. So like I said before, we're gonna try to keep the presentation to about a half hour, but again, less than that if we need to. And we'll try to jump through it as quickly as we can.
Anything in Michigan?
No interruptions.
I know interruptions, alright.
So a quick project overview. The city of Benita Springs obviously had some flooding issues during Hurricane Irma and has significant flooding issues in the past. So we've been tasked to look at different options in order to help with flood risk reduction, also with potential options for flood duration reductions. Obviously, there was effects to power, primarily flooding was from the Imperial River, as you probably know, and Imperial River is impacted by the Gulf of Mexico and drainage east of I-75. Neighborhoods included, single-family, multifamily duplexes were impacted. As I described, we were tasked with develop conceptual level design improvement alternatives, like I said, to reduce duration of flooding timeframes and to complete flood risk deduction options. So the task completed for this report, we had to obviously gather some data, get some LiDAR information. We conducted a site visit on the site in March. We completed hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of the existing conditions, simulated flood conditions, and evaluated costs with advantages and disadvantages to each alternative. Like I said, we'll go over those alternatives here in a few minutes. And then, at the end, we're, our final deliverable for this would be to produce a report documenting that analysis and then, here today, present the results to the City Council. So the study areas included three primary locations. Let's see if I can do this, okay. Imperial Benita Estates is what we kinda, we kinda had some, for lack of a better term, nicknames for these areas. Imperial Benita Estates is what this is called. Then there was also the Quinn Street area, which is east of the Imperial Parkway and north of Benita Beach Road, and also Dean Street South, which was an area just west of Imperial Parkway but south of Dean Street. So those are the study areas that we primarily focused on, on reducing, doing flood reduction measures. Data gathering, these are the sources of data. I won't go through each one of these items, but basically, we got storm sewer and culvert data. We got topographic information from Lee County. We got rainfall and hydrograph data from Lee County, as well as runoff hydrographs from Lago Consulting. There was several other previous studies that we looked at as well that helped us with our analysis. I don't know why that did that, but... Jared is gonna, Jared is more the technical guy here, more than me, so he's gonna go through the hydrologic modeling.
Okay, thank you.
So for this study, we utilized EPA SWIM model. We did a combination of 1D and 2D routing, which I'll discuss in more detail. In general, the hydrologic inputs included observed rainfall data that was collected by the city at the Benita Springs Utilities, which is the closest range. And then we simulated from 9/9/2017 to 9/15/2017 to capture that peak rainfall and peak flooding from Hurricane Irma. So it was a six-day model simulation. This is a graphic of the rainfall data utilized. The important thing here is to see this sharp increase in rainfall depth, about eight inches, that occurred late on 9/10, resulting in the flooding that was observed. So this is the actual model input. Fortunately for this site, we had a USGS gauge station at I-75 just upstream of our study area. So that gave us some good information to base the model calibration on. So this is a graphic of flow rate during the Hurricane Irma study. So the model simulation that I mentioned is graphed right here, showing where we're capturing this initial peak from Hurricane Irma. And then that is the actual hydrograph that we routed through the upstream end of our model. This was produced by Lago Consultants, they calibrated the overall Lee County study, and so we use that as an input as well. Since we had a USGS gauge station, we decided to take a closer look at some of the stream flow characteristics on the Imperial River. The graph on the left shows three years of stream flow data, and it really just illustrates the seasonal increase in water levels on the Imperial River, starting roughly in July and carrying through the fall, showing that there's just a continual building of water in the watershed. So you add a hurricane on top of that, that really can lead to some, the observed flooding. The graph on the right, our peak annual discharges for the last 30 years, starting in the 1980s up to 2017. So this is the 2017 peak. And you'll see that there are three other peaks equal to roughly or greater than what was observed during Hurricane Irma. So four times in the last 30 years, peak flows at that gauge have reached Hurricane Irma levels. And taking a closer look, so we have the four points there that are kinda standing out above the rest. These are the gauge heights for the entire year. So you can see, the thing to take away here are the conditions prior to the observed peaks. So we'll look at 2017 first, and you have the yellow line there. And you see elevated gauge heights earlier in the season, and then a peak late August when there was some flooding, I believe, and some heavy rainfall, right before Irma hit. So all of that building up to a very high peak. And you compare that with 2008, for example, which is a gray line, the peak for that is roughly right there. But you see much lower preceding water levels and resulting in ultimately slightly less flooding when that peak hits. So it really depends on the conditions leading up to the flooding, and the intensity of the rainfall and the duration all matter in how the flooding is observed and what stages you ultimately get and what duration you get. These are a few notes on the hydrologic modeling components. So I mentioned we used a 1D and 2D analysis. 1D in general is a model of pipes, ditches, culverts, storm inlets. And then the 2D component actually models the ground surface and how shallow flow moves around the watershed and the floodplain, and around homes and through alleys. So we were able to add those as obstructions and really get detailed flow paths and flood depths throughout the study area. And then ultimately, because we're looking at a very specific stretch of the Imperial River, we needed the inflow hydrographs, but we also need to know what was happening downstream. Our model had two outlets, there's a bypass to Oak Creek, and then the downstream limits of the study at Lime Street. So these are just representing stages as they were occurring downstream of our study. So we have inflow and outflow, and that's, you know, helps us analyze what's actually happening on our site. And then an overall graphic of our model layout, so I-75 there, Lime Street down here. The red triangles are kind of hard to see are the outlets. This is the bypass to Oak Creek. And then blue dots are storm inlets or points along the river channel, and these are storm sewer pipes represented in our model. For the existing conditions, we ran the six-day simulation, and this is a graphic of the max flood depths for that simulation across our study area. As you can see, pretty significant. The color gradation, the red is greater than five-foot depth, and then you get into the purples and the pink color, you're in the three-to-five-foot of flooding depth. So at this point, I think we'll go ahead and show a video animation of our model simulations. So the model ran for six days, but these videos are from the morning of 9/10 to about 9:00 p.m. on 9/12. So it's a, about a three-day simulation, capturing the peak flooding from Irma. And you can see initially these low-lying areas, especially to the south, fill up. And then some of the storm infrastructure to the north is not able to drain because of elevated water levels downstream. So it's not just water coming from the Imperial, but it's a lack of capacity in infrastructure up here as well that's contributing to some of that flooding. And so this goes on for another three days in our simulation and really stays at this level because ultimately the Imperial River is controlling, you know, the water levels and the capacity of the system. Pause it, yeah. Go back to the presentation? Yeah. So to gain some confidence in the calibration of our model, we compared the existing condition, maximum flooding extents, with some aerial photography. This is from Google Earth from 9/14, which is a pretty good representation of the flooding extents. And so we zoomed in and highlighted a few areas where there's less significant flooding, but you can see the detail in our modeling on Imperial Parkway. Right here, we're capturing some of that flooding in one of the lanes, and you can see some of the shadows from the wet pavement there, and then some of the flooding that's come right up against the homes in this neighborhood, where otherwise, these homes were elevated, and you can see that level of detail here. These are a little more challenging. We were trying to find areas where there was some high ground and showing how we were capturing some of that and the limits of the ponding. Some of these homes were elevated and somewhat protected, and we're capturing that. This one's a little easier to see, the CVS and the Walgreens down here, their parking lots dry, so they were protected. And we show the ponding kind of encircling the site as well. And then additionally, on Benita Beach Road, flooding of a portion of that street, and you can see flooding extent here. So we're pretty confident in how we captured the existing conditions. So we moved forward with developing some alternatives for limiting the flood depths or, and/or the duration. So we came up with four alternatives, each building on each other. So alternative one included additional stormwater infrastructure and backflow prevention in order to evaluate whether we could capture and drain more efficiently some isolated pockets of flat topography, kind of away from the Imperial River. And then alternative two included all of those stormwater improvements, but added some strategic flood storage locations along the river. And then alternatives three A and B are similar. They include levees, floodwalls, gate closures, and pumps. And we'll go into each one of these in further detail. These are just some examples in the model of where we added some additional storm infrastructure. This is at the northeast corner of the Imperial Benita Estates study area. We made some improvements to the outlet channel along Imperial Parkway for this detention pond. You saw the flooding spread south from here, so we were trying to increase some capacity here. And then just a range of improvements along the Imperial Benita Estates with some additional outlets into the Imperial River. With these stormwater improvements, we added backflow prevention. So this is just a description of what we mean by backflow prevention. There's two examples shown here, a flap gate, which is a metal gate, allows, has a hinge on top and opens up as water pushes against it to drain out, and the floodwaters keep it closed. The example on the right is a duckbill, it's closed, it's got a vertical opening, and then the force of the water draining through opens it up to allow water out. Otherwise, it stays closed as floodwaters back up on it. So those are just examples of, real-world examples in the modeling. We set those backflow devices so that the Imperial doesn't back up initially until it overtops its banks, and ultimately then, the storm system is not as useful, so... And then we'll just zoom in here, I guess, to some more improvements on the Quinn Street neighborhood on the south side. So there is some existing infrastructure here that drains out to Imperial Parkway. We added some additional outlets on the east side, assuming this would pond up, and as capacity is gained at each of these outfalls, we could provide some more efficient drainage. Same thing with Dean Street South, some drainage along Imperial, but we extended the infrastructure back into the neighborhoods a little further. And then, so we can go ahead and pull up the video for alternative one. Yep. Yep, go ahead. So again, similar flooding patterns. You keep an eye on, if I can point without stopping this, this area. You see some drainage occur early as the rainfall develops. But ultimately, as the simulation runs, you'll see the flooding kind of creep back in because of the levels on the Imperial River in additional rainfall. So the combination of capacity being limited downstream and then additional rainfall on top. So that's just an example of how, if you really consider a small storm event and just local rainfall, that infrastructure like storm sewers could provide improvements, but ultimately, the Imperial River stages take over the flooding scenario. And then alternative two included three strategic floodwater storage areas. We identified areas that were currently not developed, would be difficult to develop because they're already low-lying, and came up with some ways to enhance the volume available. These could be, you know, dry detention for more regular stormwater management in addition to flood storage, or potentially soccer fields and other amenities if they're graded out correctly and can maintain some level of being dry during certain portions of the year. And so here's a map of those locations up here at Imperial Benita Estates, just on the north side of Dean Street, and then over here by Quinn Street. And then we've got the storage that we estimated you could excavate in acre-feet shown there. So then these were modeled in conjunction with the storm sewer improvements, and we'll go ahead and show a simulation of that. See the flood storage fills up here pretty quickly. You've got a, showing a darker blue, so a little more depth. Some delay in the spreading of the flooding here because that storage filled up. But otherwise, the extent is still pretty significant. We'll let this run to the max, or do you want to slide? Slide it forward. Ultimately, we end up with the same aerial extent of the flooding for these two scenarios. And they're the more passive solutions, so we'll step into discussion on the floodwalls and pumps and Dave will take over here.
So the intent of the alternative three A and three B that'll be coming up shortly was to include levees or floodwalls and portable pumps for those as potential options. The standard that we typically utilize for these is utilizing the Code of Federal Regulation, Federal Regulations Title 44 CFR 6510. That, that is what gets people out of floodplains if you are utilizing those Code of Federal Regulations. So when we were looking at and analyzing these in the first place, that was what we utilized. So in order to meet those Code of Federal Regulations, you need to have an elevation up to three to four-and-a-half feet above the 100-year elevation, complete interior drainage analysis, embankment protection, embankment and foundation stability, settlement and operation, you need to meet operation and maintenance criteria. So we looked at that potential option, and in order to meet freeboard requirements, you need to have some sort of, what we talked about as some sort of encircled levee. Sorry about this. Oops, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, apologize. So yeah, so this encircled levee, there's really no location for it to tie into high ground on the north end. And so you'd have to tie back into Interstate 75 in order to meet high ground. Same thing goes for the south side. In order to protect these particular areas, there's no place to tie into high ground, so you'd have to tie back into Interstate 75. So the levee would need to be set at approximately elevation 15 feet on the downstream side and near 18 feet on the upstream side. So you can see this, this green line shows what that 44 CFR, to meet the Code of Federal regulations, would need to be as far as height is concerned. And that's in comparison to the ground elevation, which is eight to 10 feet in height. So the wall or flood wall would need to be approximately, you know, seven to nine feet in height in order to meet those criteria. So this is just, kind of gives you an idea of what a flood wall or levee would look like. Obviously, the one on the left is more, it's just a standard wall, but the one on the right has some, has some liners on it. There's other things you can do besides just, you know, a concrete wall. You could do a sheet-pile wall, but that, we're not getting into details of what kind of wall at this point. And we would just, we utilized a concrete flood wall for the purposes of our analysis here. In addition, you need road closures at every road crossing of the line of protection. This is an example of what is called like a passive wall. This would need to be, to allow people to go through during a road, you know, during normal passage, but once the water would come up, these actually float up and close off on their own. So there's a, there's a product out there called FloodBrake, if you guys are interested in taking a look at what those look like. But this is what we call a passive closure. The other option would be some sort of aluminum panel stop log, which you'd have to put into place at every road closure. And it would have to actually be installed, which would obviously take time that you may not necessarily need or have, especially something like this is occurring. One thing to keep in mind is the passive walls are significantly more expensive, but for the purposes of this analysis, that's what we utilize because of the fact that it would take a lot of effort to install these. In lieu of doing a full analysis of that encircled levee, what we did was we looked at an option that protected you from a Hurricane Irma-level event. So this is the levee alternative that we actually analyzed for this, for this particular report. The wall would tie into Interstate 75, and there is high ground here in this neighborhood that you could tie into. Obviously, there would be locations where there would be road closures still, but the wall would potentially need to only be four to five feet in height without freeboard. I'll go back, I'll show that old, that slide that showed the profiles there in a second here. But again, Interstate 75 is where high ground is, and then there would also be, it's not much, but there is a little bit of high ground at Lime Street that you could tie into potentially, again, in order to meet the criteria of it meeting the Hurricane Irma-level event. Again, this is that profile that I showed earlier. This is the existing water surface elevation that happened during Hurricane Irma. If you put these floodwalls into place, it does, because of the fact that you're taking so much room out of the way that the water flows, the proposed water surface elevation would increase as it heads upstream, potentially by a half a foot or a foot. But again, this is the level that you would need to have in order to protect you during a Hurricane Irma-level event. So that was kind of, this is, to take a step back here. Alternative three B is, includes levees and pump stations, and includes all the other analysis for all the different, or alternative one through alternative three. So it includes all those different options, or, I'm sorry, all those different improvements, all in the same alternative. So again, alternative three B has new pump stations in addition to... So again, alternative 3B has new pump stations in addition to portable pumps, which I showed earlier. I apologize, I should say that again. These could be, portable pumps could be utilized, I guess that's in the next slide, sorry. Portable pumps could be utilized in lieu of pump stations. But the pump stations, there would need to be three. There would be one in the north storage area on the Imperial Benita Estates on the west side, which would be a 38.8 million gallons per day pump station. There would be one on the south side at Quinn Street, and then on the existing channel on the Imperial Benita Estates on the east side. Again, the benefits of these pump stations is that they drain the interior while the river is at flood stage and we restore the capacity for the upstream drainage infrastructure. Want to show a video of 3B? Yeah. Do you want to show 3B, Jared? The one at the bottom, just for time. And again, this is the Hurricane Irma event with these levees. As you can see, there's not as much flooding. There is still some flooding in these areas, but it is significantly less than what's before. Also, with these pumps, it recovers a lot quicker. The, one thing to keep in mind, though, is that this is only for a Hurricane Irma event. That's what we designed for, for this particular flood wall and pump station. Stage's pretty similar here for a little while. Do you want to talk about? I guess I could roll through the next. So we're pretty close to wrapping up here. So this is, this is everything combined into one. There are the three pump stations that we described, the strategic storage locations here, and the Imperial Estates here and here, I'm sorry, over here. And then there's the new stormwater infrastructure as well. So this is kind of where, what everything would be in in the end. So this is basically a 3B option. There's, 3A was an option utilizing portable pumps in lieu of big pump stations. Portable pumps are basically tow behind pumps that I, I think I have a photo of one here coming up. But they're tow behind pumps that you could take to these strategic storage locations and pump over the wall in lieu of having full-size pump stations that you need to. As far as the cost is concerned, we included land costs, but these are very conceptual in nature. Alternative one is approximately five and a half million bucks with the professional services of 500,000. So about 6 million, all the way up to 3B, which includes about 6 million in land costs that you'd need to acquire for a total project cost.
How much?
60 million.
Six oh?
Six oh.
Or 55.
Or 55, I'm sorry, yes. I apologize. Again, these are very conceptual in nature when you're, when we're on the level of analysis that we're. Some additional considerations that we want to point out, or at least we've kind of discussed, but want to make sure that I touch on at the end here, is limitations of the levee floodwall capacity. There isn't really a good tie-in point for a full federal guideline meeting requirements because of the fact that there's no high ground to tie into. So you'd need to encircle it with tying into Interstate 75 in order to protect those locations. Any events, if you, if you utilized a smaller level of capacity, like just the Hurricane Irma, which we showed in 3B, events exceeding, potentially exceeding Irma, could cause overtopping of the flood wall, which could be very problematic as you'll have people that are potentially on the inside of this flood wall that could think that they're safe. You could consider overflow locations to allow safe discharge of floodwaters into the study area and reduce likelihood of a wall failure. But again, the other, the other thing to keep in mind is during other events similar to Katrina or whatever, there was, there was a wall in place and the wall failed. And there was quite a bit of damage, obviously, due to that. So in addition to those, there's also going to need to be permitting that needs to be done on any of these options. We're going to have to, there would have to be an assessment of environmentally regulated areas, detailed topographic survey, and also geotechnical engineering completed. The geotechnical engineering would include seepage analysis. We would need to look at floodwall stability and suitable, to see if there were suitable subsurface material for a floodwall construction. So conclusions and next steps, I'll go through these rather quickly. The study area is susceptible to flooding. The existing condition model was completed. There are three neighborhoods that we studied that were susceptible. Imperial River lacks hydraulic capacity. Flood mitigation improvement options were analyzed, and opinions of the probable costs were ranging from six to 55 million dollars. The other thing to keep in mind is there are trend, there's a trend of high river stages that begin in the summer and last through the fall. And the timing of those is critical. And the next step is to meet with the city council today and discuss any questions you have and discuss the merits of each stormwater improvement alternative. And further studies and engineering analysis will need to be completed. And we need to discuss options for further analysis and next potential stages, considering site access. This doesn't have to be do, done anytime soon. It's just, this is the next steps for you guys, for the city. With that, if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Amy?
I just have walls about, I mean, questions about the, I guess it was 3B, I don't know.
Yes.
Where everything was included.
Yes.
Is it the case that between those walls, which lie along the Imperial River, that that area would have increased flooding there because that's where the water would be outcharged?
Yeah, so that's what I showed in, yeah.
So we improve the areas that, but the areas around the Imperial River would be not improved? And in fact, be more critical?
I wouldn't say not improved. I would say that they would be, they would have higher flooding stages on them between those floodwalls. Just because they're taking up that storage capacity that you had when you flooded out of those areas into those neighborhoods, that's no longer available. So putting a flood wall in increases your stage upstream.
And we've got the profiles here. The yellow line would be the proposed
Yes.
increase in the water level with the levees.
In place.
In place versus the gray line below it, which is the existing water level.
The yellow line is the new gray line after you put all the improvements in, yeah.
Yeah.
But that would be in that area between the two walls.
Correct. And further analysis would need to be completed to show how much that would have an effect upstream of there.
Right, because you wouldn't, there's potential that this propagates a little further upstream and impacts.
Yeah.
But you would have to.
We'd have to figure out, you know, that's outside of what we're. Yeah, at least to the interstate.
Analyze, I mean, is the Imperial River just has a certain capacity? And you can't, I mean, we don't have any obstructions to it or anything like that, or? I think the two things I bring to mind, one, water might be going in there that shouldn't be going in there, you know? And the other one is that there's some reason why the water doesn't flow through to the Gulf, except the Gulf is also rising.
Yeah, I think it, I think it has to do with, you know, based on what we studied, is that the river is already high in these timeframes. And so, once you get additional rainfall on top of it, there's really, there's no place to go. And when Imperial River is high, there's no, there's no way to flow this out with gravity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Greg?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Let's see where I start at. On your rainfall gauges, when you go back to the modeling or the gauges like in, like the first two or three slides.
Yes, sir.
Where it talks about, did it take into account? I know at one point you said it did, but did all the modeling take into account the, you know, the days before? You said Irma itself was an eight-inch rain event or a hurricane event. What about the two weeks or the months preceding that? Did that carry through to your modeling also?
Yes, absolutely. You can talk to that if you want. Do you want to go to the next slide?
Yeah, where we show.
Back to, I think.
Some of the boundary conditions. For example, this, this model run starts at the beginning of the month here. And so these were conditions from the countywide model along the Imperial that we plugged in to our simulation. So it establishes those preceding conditions.
Yeah, so the preceding conditions are included in this because we're doing a real.
All right, did you, but okay, let's back up two seconds before that or two minutes, two days before that. If we not, if we wouldn't have had that rain preceding that, would, would the Imperial River have failed? I guess is my question in your modeling. If we'd have just had Hurricane Irma with nothing preceding it?
It, it takes time to recover. Imperial River takes time to recover, especially during these months of the year. As you can see, it kind of, for lack of a better term, it builds. And without it able to have time to recover without rain, there really is no place for it to go.
My other question.
I don't know if that answered your question.
It did a little bit, but it did, had we just had an Irma
Right.
by itself with nothing preceding, like, let's say, first of, you know.
I guess it depends on the timeframe. If it was low, you know, we might have recovered. You guys might have recovered better.
Okay.
But since it was high before then, it's, it's not able to go anywhere.
And you're probably talking about a scenario like here, for example, and
Right.
where it spikes dramatically.
Like August, in August, would we have?
Right.
Exactly.
And preceding conditions would matter.
I mean, 92, for example, there was quite a, there was quite a dis, a low before you started.
Bad one too.
And then it, and then because there was quite a bit of high rainfall, that was a, or a discharge that was high, it peaked, but it came back down relatively quickly. So it kind of depends, again, on where it's at in the beginning when the rainfall hits.
My other question was on your models, and it showed, go ahead, like four or five slides where it showed the aerial footage, the actual aerial footage versus your modeling?
Yes.
I guess my concern is, next page, next one, next one. On that one, we know, the mayor and myself and everybody here knows that the water was going across Benita Beach Road, but your modeling doesn't show that. Is there a reason?
So, yeah, I understand.
Because the way it looks, the way it makes it look here is that it's a dike or a dam itself, dam itself. But we know it didn't, it went over that.
So that's the limits of our model.
Okay.
So in this scenario, it would actually, because our limit of our model was at Benita Beach Road, it would actually just, it goes off of our model and we don't show anything. The reason, we kind of had to limit where we put this because this is a very big tool. This is a 2D model. So we had to kind of limit where we put. So you can see there's kind of a dividing line there. But the purple, there is actually three to five feet in height. So obviously, if you have three to five feet right next to the road, it's going to overtop it. But that's just where the limits of our model is.
So we have a boundary on the 2D portion of the model where the water is just leaving our 2D grid.
Yeah. And you can kind of see it up in that neighborhood on the northwest. There's actually a very distinct line there where, where water would actually go off into those other neighborhoods. But it doesn't show in our modeling just because we had to stop it somewhere we can't.
Gotcha. On the backflows, I know it's early in the game. Recommendation versus the duct bill versus the other one on maintenance?
Duck bills are kind of typical now. I mean, flap gates are cheap. It kind of depends on also like, you know.
Maintenance wise, though, which one's going to be easier to maintain, the duct bill? Because the other ones are mechanical and they.
Yeah, and you got to grease them, you got to grease them more.
They got to be physically opened and shut.
Right.
Things will get caught.
Things, yeah, and, you know, when I design these, I usually put duct bills unless they're hanging out into the river because they do stick out far and I don't want them to get drilled by a log or whatever.
And I guess my last question, when you talk about 3A and B about the pumps.
Yes.
Capacity. Amy kind of already touched on it. Is there capacity available for the river to do that? I mean, we got to pump it somewhere.
Yeah, so.
Typically, it's going to be to the river.
Right.
And if it's already flooded and at peak, we're pumping it to.
Yeah, so you're pumping it, but you're, because you've got more water coming in, you see there's more head, so it would discharge downstream better. That's why we got the walls in place to kind of protect it from going back. And that's why we tied it into some sort of high ground.
Now, is that something, I know it's through 44 CFR 6510.
Yes.
Obviously, the Army Corps is going to have to get involved too with, can it handle that much capacity? Just, or Southwest Florida Water Management? Because like right now, with Logan Boulevard, we're wanting to put in culverts and pump water south. Army Corps and Southwest Florida Water Management is saying you can only pump so many CFMs. Is it going to be limited to that?
That's really, if you looked at that option, there's a, you know, as you get into the more significant improvements, but all of them are going to require permitting. And all of those agencies you mentioned, the State Department of Environmental Protection would be involved if you chose to pursue that.
Well, I know, I just don't want to give the public a false sense that we're going to put these pumps in and we're going to be like, you know, New Orleans below flood, floodplain, and we can pump this stuff everywhere. When in reality, instead of a, let's say, a 20,000 GPM pump, we can only put in a 2,000 GPM pump, which is, may essentially not do what we want it to do.
Right. Like we're saying, these, these events are, and we're only, and the only one that we looked at was.
It's Irma.
Because it was an Irma.
It's eight-inch rainfall and prior to whatever we got.
Yep.
Prior to.
All right. And the conditions of the flooding upstream. That's the biggest thing, though. The eight-inch rainfall, and I guess I should say this, the eight-inch rainfall was a factor. But it's all about, I mean, there's a lot of rainfall that happened upstream that is coming into our area. And this is just a coincident rainfall event is what we, what the, what we call in the industry, I guess.
Okay, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Laura?
So we can mix and match the gate valve versus the duck valve?
Yes. They're, they, from a modeling perspective, they have no.
What about, what are the pros and cons and costs?
Flap gates are a little cheaper.
And they come up automatically?
Oh, oh, so we're talking the flood wall, the road closures?
Yes.
Okay, so the road closures, do you mind going to that one real quick? So these road closures, they come up automatically. They cost about 1,200, and I guess I shouldn't say this, it's about 1,200 bucks a square foot for protection. The aluminum ones are obviously cheaper, but again, you have to actually install them.
Right. But by how much? And storage?
I, I don't know anything off the top of my, I can look into that. But for the purposes of what we did, we just didn't think it was a, you know, well, I guess I should say, it just seems like it would be better to do a passive wall system in this particular scenario, just from a maintenance standpoint.
Operations and maintenance and storing those components.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Getting them out there in time is the other factor.
Is difficult, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Peter?
A few points. One is, this is highly professional presentation. I've been sitting here three years and I've never seen something so complicated presented in such a straightforward way. So thank you for that. Second point is, thank you for bringing reality to this. I mean, we've talked about this before, we're a city that floods. And one way or another, we got to face that reality and have flood control. And we really don't have any flood control now. We just have what they call a natural system. So, thank you. One, one question, which is, people who have been here for a long time have said, this is L O R E, lore, that the 95 floods just pushed a lot of silt into the Imperial River, really kind of clogged it up, all right? And I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what they say. So what about the hydraulic capacity point in terms of appropriate dredging and getting more hydraulic capacity in the river?
You know, dredging doesn't really, I mean, in this kind of scenario, there would be, water would be so high, you would be above, there really isn't that much of a benefit of dredging just because of the fact that the water would already be high from downstream conditions, that anything that you dredge out is going to be minor in comparison. We could, we could model putting in a, a channel that's lower, but it's going to have little to no effect on this kind of event or even probably even smaller events just because of the fact that the water, you're not going to be like putting in water at a low elevation because the water's already high.
Claim that volume.
And it's claim that volume.
All right, claimed it, all right.
Also, I see Phil Flood in the back. Thanks for being here today, Phil.
Along as, if I, if I may, just piggyback on it, it wouldn't, like what Peter was talking about, the hydrology, it wouldn't make it move more water because you have a bigger container?
Make it wider because of the amount of water in the watershed and the continual building of that. A lot of the storage is already filled up when events like the hurricane happen.
So if you were to lower the channel bed there, the water would have already, during a, during an event like this, I mean, that's.
Say, I'm just thinking more wa, I mean, like, let's use this.
Yeah.
Pour it out of here, fine, but if I cut the end of it off, it's going to come out quicker and move faster.
Right.
That's my, that's the, I think that's what Peter was trying to say. We can more, move more volume on the hydrology side of it.
It's just that the water bottle is much, much bigger.
Sitting in a bathtub full of water.
I understand, all right. Sorry, sir. Sorry, sir.
No, you're good, you're fine. Peter, you're good. Mike?
Thanks, Peter. Um, so you mentioned a few times that water's gonna be higher upstream, but wouldn't it also be higher low downstream? Because if you're backing it up, it's gonna be a couple of feet higher upstream. You know, it's not gonna, like, just drop off a waterfall or something, where it's magically dropping a couple of feet.
So.
There's only so much capacity going out the river, so if we're keep, if we're not allowing it to spread out and reduce some of that water that's coming down the river, you know, right now it's flooding an area, but that water now is gonna be continuing on downstream, so are we gonna cause more flooding elsewhere?
Upstream, potentially, uh, because of the fact that it's higher there. But downstream, um, and I, from a downstream perspective, you know, it's, it's kinda tough. I, I, I don't think, because we actually modeled this, you know, so it shows that there is no increased discharge or increase of elevation downstream. When you put, and I'm trying to explain this, i- if you, it, when you start shrinking it, it doesn't affect downstream, because the ar- the effects have already occurred further downstream. So you would have, the only way you can increase water surface elevations upstream is if you, or increase water surface elevations is if you put something in constricting, but that only affects upstream. It doesn't affect what happens downstream, because the effects of water have already occurred downstream of this. The only effects that you start seeing is when it actually occurs. Meaning, if I, you know, a stream, if you, if you have something that occurs downstream, and then you put it in, you know, you squeeze it, that's when it's gonna start increasing your water surface elevation, increasing your head.
It gets into the open channel hydraulics where you have different flow regimes, subcritical, which is, I'm gonna get into this just quickly, very deep flooding, and that's the scenario we have here. And so you have a condition downstream, which is the levee walls, and all the impacts from that propagate upstream with the type of hydraulics we're using, so that's.
But then, but, so now you have more storage upstream, so any flooding downstream's gonna last longer, because you have more water that has to make its way through now.
Yes, over time, you'll probably see that water will need to drain.
It'll take longer, potentially, for it to discharge downstream, because you've, you've squeezed it and you've stored it upstream. You're exactly right.
It's like.
But it doesn't mean that you're gonna increase discharges downstream, it means you're going to have them last longer, potentially.
For example, if you develop a site, so this piece of land drained to a ditch, and the water level reached a certain peak, you develop it, and you put detention on the site, you hold that water back, but you're generating more runoff from the site because it's impervious, but you're releasing it slower, so you're gonna see a lower discharge, but a longer duration for that detention basin to drain out, is that?
Well, that's if you're doing a detention basin.
Right.
Which is, if we're just backing everything off the river.
On a very large scale, kind of doing.
Doing that same thing on an extremely large scale, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it's a, it's a lot, and, and really, it didn't seem like it was, uh, 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 even at the fifty-five million dollar level, it, we're still getting some flooding, and, and then if we had higher rainfalls, then it goes over the wall, then it's probably worse now, because there's a wall there.
Right.
But I think Jim said that from the get-go, Beaver, you're not gonna flood proof it, you're just gonna reduce it.
Yeah, and, you know, there is a potential, if you, if you, you know, did the forty-four CFR sixty-five-ten, you know, even that scenario, there's a potential that you'd get a higher event than that, and that could overtop. So I mean, you know, there, there, and that's a higher, that's obviously a much higher wall, which would be more, more expensive.
And, but your study didn't really go on the other side of I-75. So what happens if we're increasing the water on that side, and now it's coming over Beach Road on the east side of seventy-five?
Yeah, and I, and we didn't do that analysis, so it's gonna be tough for me to be able to explain what could happen, but what I can tell you is that it increases water surface elevation on Interstate seventy-five, and there could be potential that it could increase water surface elevations upstream of there. I just don't know how much, because we didn't study it.
Yeah, I think it'd just be hard to make a decision to go for, like, uh, 3B, and without knowing what, what the effect elsewhere is gonna be, because, um, I believe I've, uh, read that on the Mississippi River, you know, they, they went and put the levees in and tried to channelize it, you know, pump it out as fa- fast as possible, but that just made flooding worse. So now they're actually doing things to where they're allowing it to overflow in certain areas to reduce the amount of water going through to, to reduce the flooding elsewhere. Uh, because the water's all gotta go somewhere, so the more you hold it back, it's, it's either it's just gonna flow elsewhere, or it's just gonna be sitting there to continue to come down. Um, but I still would have to believe that downstream is gonna be a little higher, because I can't see the water just increasing in height on this side, and then magically, you know, being down, still down at this level here. It, it's gonna be rushing through that channelized, you know, levees faster, and it, it, it's gotta go higher. And, and I thought on your things, I, I couldn't remember from one slide or the other, but it looked like it was a little bit deeper on the, on the western side, on your, uh, projections.
Yeah, potentially on the western side, where we're not putting in, um, it could have stored more, because it needs a place to store.
Well, on, on the western side is, is downstream, and, and that, it looked like it was deeper on the downstream side, so.
Okay, this is on the, this is the, I, I, I get what you're saying. I, I, I would say it increases as it goes upstream of where we put in floodwalls, based on the modeling that we run.
Can, can you show the, uh, the slides again that had the, uh, the water depths for, for the whole area, you know, both before and after?
Yeah, I think so. And you might be, you might be right, as far as the areas that are within the, well, and I'm not.
Well, and this flood wall extends further, and this one ties in. So I think you're still gonna have some increased water levels from this point.
Yeah.
Back. So, the fact that there's no levy on this side, but there is on this side, you're right, would potentially push higher water elevation to the north.
To the north.
Is that what you're?
Maybe that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, Peter?
I just, um, I'm taking this that, even though you've been asked to focus on this, these three areas, we're not dealing with flood in isolation here in the city. In other words, we've got the whole area out east, where we want more water south, we want to store, big possibilities for storing more water. There were various pro- this is just one project, and it's kinda like hip bones connected to the thigh bone. So I think all the points Mike are making, I'm hoping that what we're dealing with is, I understand those points, but it's, this is in connection with a far larger problem we have, where other things in other areas are connected.
Yeah.
Uh, and it can't be done in isolation. You've been asked to do it in isolation, in effect. You've gotta study boundary.
Right. And, you know, the, the benefits of this model is that when other things change.
Right.
You can utilize this model still. I mean, this is you guys' property now. You guys can utilize this and make any adjustments to see how they affect this particular area.
Whatever comes in here can be added to the model, and then the downstream conditions if those change.
These two, these two photos, is this A and?
3A and 3B.
Right.
Wh- where's the picture of, like, what we actually had? The, the model of, uh, because both of those are with a, a fix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so pa- past where the levees would be, it's still kinda similar. And, and the edge of the blue, you said that's the edge of your.
Yeah, that's.
So, so there's actually more water depth there. It, it's not just ma- it's not dry just past where the blue is, right?
No, no, this is, this is the limits of our study area. Like I said, when, when you did this as 2D, it takes a lo- I mean, it takes him an hour and a half to run one time any model, because of the complication of the 2D.
Make one change and run it for two hours and.
Right, yeah. Sure.
Is it, is it worthwhile to consider the flow from the northeast? I mean, all this water is coming from way beyond here.
Yeah, and we took that into account, the drainage area that's coming in.
So, there might be a larger problem, sort of like what, um, Mike is talking about, that we need, that the volume of water that's coming into this area and other areas of Benita Springs, um, is probably outside of our boundaries.
Outside of the limits of our study, is that what?
And also, no, our city boundaries.
Oh, that's potentially the case as well.
So I think that this definitely would have to be integrated with our other efforts if we get to those points, because some of that is redirecting, like, the Logan Boulevard thing is redirecting it south, hopefully, if we can get approval to do that. We're looking into trying to ha- have some improvements to Spring Creek, which some of that volume that's supposed to go to Spring Creek is not going there. And the same thing with Oak Creek, so there's, you know, we can't just say, let the same kind of water flow here in quantity, and then block it up in this one area that was hit so hard. We need to integrate it with some mitigation processes outside of this area, and integrate it.
Up to you guys.
Yeah. I mean, because it's a qua- it's a quantity problem that is not totally related to the infrastructure that we have in quantity problem within Benita Springs, that's what I see. And I have concerns, sort of what, uh, Mike has identified, for what it does along, between those levees. You know, that's, we have to look at that more, you know, more carefully.
I would agree.
Fred, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah.
The only one waiting more patiently than you is me.
I would like to be able to get through my statements and questions without everybody piggybacking, because we're running late on your, never make your ten thirty.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, number one, wouldn't it be fair to say if we did all this, and we didn't have work going on concurrently, which runs the price up way more, that east of I-75, that probably communities that just made it by the skin of their teeth without getting water in, like Morton Grove, Lake Salazar, a place like that would be worse or off, because the water's not getting away from there as fast as it was.
It, it's, and I, I appreciate what, I just, I can't, I can't tell you how much, just because.
No, I know, but it, it, it's gonna make it worse, it's not gonna make it better. It's not gonna be a static thing, I think.
And all of that would need to be ironed out with further analysis, and permitting, for sure, before anything like this is ever approved, so.
Okay, now, the, um, the other thing is, if we didn't do Quinn Street and IBE, and we concentrated on Dean Street, how much of the improvements, if we don't do those improvements that protect Quinn and IBE right now, doesn't, that makes you have to do more to do, to kinda put Dean Street in good order, or what do you think about that?
Um, I, I, we didn't prioritize between any of the locations.
Okay. Now, this, this, out of having learned all this, I mean, you guys, one thing about, you know, a lot about, more about the river than probably anybody here, Matt's probably close behind you, though. One of the problems we have right now, and this is digressing slightly, but it's still important, South Florida Water Management only requires you design a stormwater system for a twenty-five-year, three-day storm. They don't talk about having lots of storms before, which makes the river up and makes the amount of saturation of the ground, you know, you're reaching a hundred percent. So that, that's a problem we have. Benita, because we do have these areas that are prone to flooding, we have all the justification we want, need, to change our local design conditions, where we say you've gotta have the design based on a river, starting elevation of this, bigger storms, a hundred percent saturation. Now, one last thing. We're supposed to have figured out what we're gonna do with our legislative ask. I personally urge this council to come up with alternatives that we're asking money for, rather than this area, because if anybody puts a cost reasonable analysis on this, it's not gonna, it's not gonna float the boat. We've already got, I think, the last I heard yesterday, seventy-six people, I think, and primarily in the Quinn Street area, that have signed up, that are interested in participating in that, where FEMA buys you out. We haven't even looked at the other option yet, because I think that pot of money hasn't come available, to actually give them a grant, they tear the house down, or they tear the roof off and elevate the living area up. So I, I, I just think that we are, I cannot support asking our state's people to give more money to design something that is not cost reasonable. I'm sorry, but I, and, and this has just come out exactly what I thought. I'm glad we did it, because now we were told by other engineering firms that things aren't cost reasonable, permitting's a problem, now you've got figures and information to back that up. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, and I guess my question, Phil, it's great to have you here, so thanks for being here. And I, after the presentation, I wouldn't even mind if you wanted to share a quick update with things, because Peter said it, and I guess maybe, in the interest of time, the best way for me to come about this is the knee bone connected, you know, to the hip bone, the hip bone connected to the elbow bone, and there's so much going on. I mean, and I'll just rattle through this the best way that I can, just in, to try to bring in where, where my head is with this. Uh, you have a president that's supportive, uh, financially of Everglades Restoration and Water Management. You have a United States House of Representatives that has put money in this year's budget for this issue. It's now over in the United States Senate, and that's where the mayor's efforts are gonna lie this fall. You have a governor of Florida, who's in town today, as we all know. You have a Florida State Senate, you have a Florida State House, and you have over four hundred mayors rowing, literally, no, no pun intended, in the same direction on this issue. Phil knows this, Phil knows more about what's going on. My questions would, with that in mind, would revolve around C-43, what's that gonna amount to for water in Benita Springs? And then I had a technical question, which is, what would one more inch or one less inch of rain on those type pictures mean? Half inch, pick your number, in terms of, I guess it would be cubic gallons, or I'll just say gallons. Cub- yeah, yeah, yeah. So, those are my questions, in no particular order, or comments, so that's where I am.
Uh, as far as.
How do you guys fit into what, you know, the White House and Tallahassee? And Benita Springs?
To that intelligently, that's not really my.
No, I, no, I, but you see what I'm saying.
I do, I do. I understand completely, yeah. Uh, as far as the one inch, more or less, I, I don't think it would have a drastic impact, because again, we talk about how Imperial River was stacked pretty high at this time.
So what are you talking about rainfall-wise, or ra- or water management-wise, uh, would make, would be significant, would matter? Um, back to Mike's point of, you know, are, are we, are we bailing out enough water to keep the boat from sinking, so to speak? I mean, we're taking on water, but are we pumping out more than we're taking in?
I would say you can reduce your likelihood of flooding for a certain level of events, if you were to take on 3B, you know, for example, but that's only gonna help for a certain level. Um, as, as far as your question is, and I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to understand, you're, you're asking, are we, are we, are we able, I guess, can you, do you mind repeating that? I apologize, I'm not.
No, well, okay, I'm wondering in terms of, uh, all these other, if, if we reduce the amount of water in the area, period, period.
Yes.
No matter what Mother Nature brings in terms of rainfall, if we can reduce water from two-thirds of the state of Florida, or to a degree where it's significant, up in Michigan, we call it Down River. That's, my wife's a Michigan native, and I lived there for fifteen years. The southeast part of Michigan is the, that, that emptied into Lake Erie, was what they called Down River. All the water from up northern Michigan would, would flow to the southeast primarily. Well, in Florida, we know where it flows primarily, to the southwest part of the state. So what I'm saying is, if you reduce the water upstate that's actually getting here, to begin with, with C-43, and more getting into Florida Bay going south, and, I'm not trying to complicate this, I just want your candid take on that.
So, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the, the watershed that feeds this river is the Corkscrew Swamp. So I think your question, you know, to, to frame it for you guys, is, is really, you know, if you reduced water out of the Corkscrew Swamp. Now, I know you didn't model the Corkscrew Swamp, you really kinda modeled the condition that it fed to us, but if that helps.
If you're able to reduce how much water gets to this area.
Right.
It would help.
Right, because, because that's, that's, as I kinda mentioned, that is one of the issues to begin with.
Sure.
The water in the Imperial River, right off the bat.
Right.
And how you don't have a lot of extra room to accommodate any additional. And how you don't have a lot of extra room to accommodate any additional rainfall for an event like this during these months.
Mm-hmm.
So, intuitively, yes, if you were able to decrease that amount of water coming in, that would provide that additional potential storage to help, to help, yeah.
Right. And all you guys can do is plan and model on, as it is right now, and I completely understand that.
So, what we would do is.
Points not lost on me.
And this is a much, you know, as we mentioned, it's a much bigger, much bigger area, much bigger mile. So, so what we would do is, whatever that potential decrease is for this particular area, would, would simply be entered in, and, and you would see the, you would see the effects of, of the mile based on that reduction upstream.
Right, okay. Fred?
I'd just like to say that.
We'll do the speed round, coming back.
Yeah, real, real, real quick. Number one, most, all that work and all this effort to the mayors and the Congress, Trump, DeSantis are concerned about is water quality, it's not flooding. There's a lot of rivers between here and Lake O and us that will pick up water, and this, that Lake O Kachobi project, which is a great thing, would not significantly change how much water we get in a flood. Now, you can look at the ceiling, you can do what you want, but that's fact. Secondly, Benita Springs, most of it did not flood. If you get down to how many houses flooded, it was a few hundred houses. If you count in the trailers, it's another few hundred more, unless you want to count the floor rooms that were built on grade. So, that, that's the reality of it, and, and I think the, I think the figures speak what, for themselves, and you may not like the figures, but you've got figures.
Thanks. Mike, did you look at all at how much capacity was able to go under Imperial with that bridge there? Like, I, I don't, I don't know if most of that flooding is due to the switchback of the, the river, and, and that it's just lower like a bowl there, or was any of it being held back because of the switchback and, and the bridge?
Their scope was, was very specific to this area, to, to understand what, if anything, could be done, you know, to mitigate the effects of flooding. There's another study that you'll be hearing in the future that, that looks at some of those ideas, and, and more the broader movement of water through the city. So, there's, some of these questions that you've asked are tied to the efforts that the county is doing in terms of modeling, and also the city with another firm. The, that work was integral to the, the specific work that these guys did in that area, the, the work that we commissioned with the city, we just haven't, it's, it's not at a point to fully present to City Council, but it would, that question would probably be better served with those folks.
Yeah. Peter?
I'm going to say something I think is obvious, that I don't think we're deciding today whether to put flood walls up. I, I don't think this, you know, I'm for a flood wall, I'm against a flood wall. This is a good and essential step along the way. We had the Beaver Report, we know what the issues are, we're working with the Water Management District, and this is a great step along the way. So, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Laura?
I echo Peter, it was a great presentation, learned a lot.
Greg?
No, I agree, I think this is just another tool in the toolbox that we've got to look at, to see how we're going to either, A, mitigate or fix this problem. We're not going to fix it, we're just going to have to hope to contain it.
Thank you. Amy?
I just suggest that we schedule when some of these other things are closer to being presented, that we have it in a workshop kind of environment, where we just talk about this, because obviously, we can talk about this all day long. And I agree with what Fred said in regard to the effort that's being done out of Lake O, that from my understanding, from the many water conferences that I've been to, and what's, and the understanding coming out of the Horizon Council, is that a quantity issue would not help us here. We have a totally different problem. We were very much in support of all that that's going on, and all the support that we've gotten out of the state and the federal governments, but it would not really help the problem that we're addressing here in regard to flooding, from what my understanding. But we can talk about that in a workshop environment.
No, absolutely, and, and Greg, you had one thing?
Yeah, I just had a, a point, and I don't know if it, if it works or not. Each, it seems like, Matt, going back to what you were saying, Matt, each one of these companies or projects are singular to what they've been tasked with. Like, this is the Quinn's Down IBE area, the next one's going to be the hydrology, and how much water, how many CFMs can go down the river, and if we made straight lines versus switchbacks versus new bridges to do that. Is there a way that we can take either a Jim Beaver, or a Phil Flood in, in Southwest Florida, or a single, a singular entity to say, all right, here's the entire picture of Benita Springs, if we make this change, this change, and this change, how does it affect upstream, downstream, and everything?
You.
Instead of piecemealing, right now, right now, we're piecemealing, these guy, these, this company's been tasked with this area. So, Mike has questions, and so does Fred, what happens to Lake Shalimar, what happens to Citrus Park? We don't know, because they haven't been tasked with that. Can we get one big picture?
The short answer is, you know, the, the fabric that all of this lays on is the modeling, right? So, if you look at, back in their presentation, at, at their calibration photos that show you, look, we think we got it right, that's the fabric. That fabric, that model, is, at the largest level, is being worked on by our county partners, okay? We are working within the same language, the same fabric, which is the other study I mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
So, ultimately, once that, that heavy lift is completed, you've got the, you've got the base to model every project, and see, if I do A and B, what happens to neighborhood D, right?
Right, okay.
So, so that's what all of this, I know it looks like it's piecemeal, but it's, that's what is happening here in our, in our region, and those, both of those efforts, ours and the county's, are getting close to wrapping up.
Okay.
And they, they will, that's where you'll have that. There's probably, as has been mentioned by council, additional steps, you know, we haven't looked at every neighborhood specifically. This is a very specific look, you know, looking at one of the hardest-hit areas that we saw to say what, what can be done, but there are probably other efforts, once we get that harmonization, to, to look at other, other areas and see what can be done.
Yeah, because I think so, because I mean, if you talk to the people in Morton Grove or in Lake Shalimar, they're going to say they were just as hit, as hard as the Quinn Downs area. So, all right, thank you.
Great, no, and I'll just leave with, I was, as of 10:22, which is, I guess, now, we're told Governor DeSantis' plane has just landed. Where it's landed, I don't know, but it's landed somewhere. He was watching us. He was, and I guess I would just leave this is with Phil in the room, and Phil and I've had discussions, and I've mentioned it to council before, late September, mid to late September, I know Chauncey Goss has agreed, Chairman Goss has agreed to do a town hall meeting here in Benita Springs, all things water, Dr. Parsons from FGCU has agreed to join the town hall meeting with all things water, and obviously will include the new commissioner. I think there is a lot more that can be done, I think you, you, look, you, I'll go back to saying you guys are dealing with conditions as they are now. Another issue, that, whether it will be done through South Florida Water Management, or potentially legislatively, is what water district the city of Benita Springs is in, right, what, where we belong, because we have unique conditions. And I'll just leave it at that, and thank you, gentlemen, very much for being here. Thank you so much.
Do we need to continue that zoning thing?
Well, we're gonna, the presentation is over, team, where would you like to go from here? Derek?
You have two public hearings scheduled, and then you have a couple city manager items. I don't, I, I don't see any reason why the, as I stated, the second reading of the credit card, I'm going to ask to continue that, but you still have one public hearing, I don't know if you have time to get through that.
We would like to, if we had the opportunity, go through the public hearing for the grant application, so we can keep that process moving forward.
Sure.
We're kind of keeping it brief.
Absolutely, okay.
Ellie could come forward.
Sure. Hello, good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I'm going to be very brief, I'm Ellie McEwen, your staff member from Public Works, and we are here this morning to hold the public hearing for citizen input and comments and participation for the CDBGDR, which is Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery for Infrastructure Repair Program. As part of the grant application, we're required to hold this particular public hearing. We published a notice in the Naples Daily News on August the 11th for this meeting today. And just to refresh your memory, FDEO has allocated $85.6 million for the most impacted cities and counties from Hurricane Irma for infrastructure repair. The grant announcement was posted on July 15th, and the grant applications are due on August 30th, which is next Friday. Our application will support and to help enhance our highest priority areas. And it'll, the improvement areas are what you just got through talking about. So, with that, I'll just open it up for any public comment, and answer any questions you might have.
Sure. Counsel? Great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, any public comment? Okay, seeing none? What would we like to tackle next, Eric?
Moving on, I'm going to go, just head, go ahead and, and read the title, and open it up, and then ask for you to continue it. Second reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, provide for retail gas pump security measures, establishing security pump measure requirements for owners and operators of retail gas pumps, providing for separability, conflicts, codification, scribners errors, and providing for an effective date. As I indicated earlier, I have been in correspondence with the Lee County Sheriff's Council with regard to Councilman Gibson's question about the, if you recall, this is about the chip readers, and what happens if someone actually puts a, a separate chip reader in that can also read the encrypted chip? If there's no security on the outside, then how is that affected?
Well, it's not just the encrypted chip, it's magnetic scanner, so it scans a mag, magnet, too. The, just, just quickly, most of your skimmers are actually add-on pieces that they put on, either on the outside, or to where you can just barely see it, because it's inside, it makes the hard, the card harder to put in. So, it's reading all your information before it goes through the scanner. One of the options was encrypting from the scanner to, you know, when it goes over the internet, but if it's reading your card, beside, you know, not through their scanner, but, you know, the, the skimmer is separate, it, it doesn't help, it doesn't help at all.
Then the alternative measure doesn't do anything, especially if you can't lock it out from, if it's not an internal thing. So, the, the, I'm going to be meeting with their, their attorneys to discuss the issue further, and see if additional changes be made, so what I'm requesting is that you continue the second reading to a time certain of September 16th at 9:00 AM.
There's been a motion to continue and a second, is there further discussion?
Just a.
Greg?
Quick question, September 16th is not a normal meeting for us.
Is that not one of our?
It'd be the 18th.
18th, okay.
Thank you. Typo, Rooney. Roll call, please.
Councilman Duitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCourum.
Great. Derek, anything?
All, all the other items we have today can be addressed at your 1:00 meeting.
Okay, dynamite, thank you very much. Okay, public comment? Any members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
City managers' items.
We have a brief presentation for you, we will keep it as brief as can, but we've got a lot of public inquiry lately about our TMDL projects, and we wanted to provide a, a quick update for you.
Sure, it was, he did land at RSW, and he is traveling to Coconut Point as we speak.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it brief. This, an update on our Imperial River TMDL.
Could we continue this to 1:00?
We can.
We're going to be here.
I think it's right.
We're going to be here 1:00.
Otherwise, we might as well just stay till 1:00, if we don't go now.
Is it okay with you, Matt?
Yeah, move to continue till 1:00.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Second?
A second? Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes. Councilwoman McCourum.
Aye.
Councilman Duitt.
Okay.
I have a question.
It doesn't matter one way or another.
I have a question, what exactly are we going to be going up to Coconut, what are we going to be doing up there?
I'm not the party planner, but the governor's in town, and there's 600 people in a room. If we'd like to go, there's plenty of, you know, there will be room to stand or sit, we can find people.
We just want to hear him, are we going to have a hearing, are we going to have a recep, I mean, are they going to receive us, or what?
No.
We're going to just observe him?
And go to the water summit, if you want to.
And go.
You don't have to. I just brought it up.
I have a lot of constituents that asked me to go, I mean, one woman actually had a ticket for me, so, I don't know, I mean, some people are really.
I'd like to go up in here and talk.
Yeah. I mean, but if we're just going to be standing in the background and not even get in, then...
We'll get in, but we.
But I want to hang with.
Time sensitive, we can sit here and argue about it, or just hang till 1:00.
Okay.
So, let's hang and argue till 1:00, Amy, based on the look on your face. So, Matt, why don't you go ahead?
No. No, no, no. If you had arranged something, because I don't understand.
I apologize in advance, I'm one person, Amy, I can only coordinate 75 schedules.
When we go up there, we just go there and try to.
I apologized in advance that I didn't move the meeting until the evening.
Never mind.
I apologize. I hadn't, no other mayors are getting private sittings, so I apologize. You don't have to go, if you don't want to go.
I think you're just looking to adjourn the meeting. You're looking for.
Did, right?
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't adjourn it, we moved this one to 1:00, there's other things.
Moved it to, we.[1775.01]